Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the May sixth, two thousand twenty-four Crest Hill City Council Meeting to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge allegiance to the flag and remove your caps, and please remain standing after the pledge. It is with a heavy heart that I announce that Alderman John Boucher passed away on Sunday, April twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four. John was eighty-seven years old. John leaves behind two daughters and one son. His son is in the back of the room this evening, John Junior. His two daughters are Tammy and Christine. Christine is our city clerk. John also leaves behind his favorite granddaughter, Molly. John was a very loyal and loving husband to his wife, May Dean, who passed away in nineteen eighty-seven. John was a very loyal father to his son and daughters. John was a very loyal father-in-law. And a very loyal grandfather. John was first elected in nineteen seventy-nine. And served for forty-five consecutive years on this city council in that seat. That's quite an accomplishment in today's age to be elected so many times consecutively. So we as a city of Crest Hill, we certainly want to thank John for his years of dedication, commitment, and loyalty to the city of Crest Hill. Because John certainly did make the city of Crest Hill a better place to live. He improved the quality of life for our residents, and he was always concerned about the seniors, the seniors of this town. I would say that we probably always didn't agree, but our disagreements were always done respectfully. And we did what we thought was right for the city of Crest Hill. John Boucher will be missed very, very much from this city council. This is a difficult time for all of us here. So if you do pray, I would ask that you keep in your prayers the family of John Boucher for strength during this difficult time for them. And I would now ask for a moment's silence in honor of Alderman John Boucher, Ward One, City of Crest Hill. Roll call, please, Karen.
Scott Dyke. Darrell Jefferson.
Here.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Here.
Nate Albert.
Here.
Joe Kuba.
Here.
Ryan Condon.
Okay, the first order of business is a public hearing. I would ask for a motion to go into a, uh, motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman, uh, Albert, to go into public hearing at seven oh four P M. Roll call, please, Karen.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is open at seven oh four P M. I will read a letter. This is a public hearing with respect to a sign ordinance variance for Lucky Brothers Shell Gas Station located at two fifty-one Caton Farm Road. We received this letter from the owners of, from the applicant. I'm gonna read part of the letter. On behalf of Shell at two fifty-one Caton Farm Road, we formally withdraw our sign ordinance variance request. Due to the revisions made to the sign in question, it is now in compliance with the city sign ordinance regulations and no longer needs a variance. Since we are no longer seeking the sign ordinance variation, please officially close the public hearing. And recognize on the public record that no further action on this variation application is required since the Shell has withdrawn the request. With that being said, I would ask for a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Guzal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to close the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, public hearing is closed at seven oh six P M. And we will return to the second item on the agenda. That would be for the approval of the minutes of the city council meeting held on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Guzal for the approval of the city council meeting minutes held on April fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carried.
I also ask for approval of the minutes of the work session held on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Guzal, seconded by Alderman Dyke for the approval of the work session minutes held on April twenty-second, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
And I ask for the approval of the minutes of the work session held on April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Guzal for the approval of the work session minutes of April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Epstein.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, moving on to our city attorney, Mike Steph. Good evening, Mike.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I have one agenda item for you this evening. This is the settlement of a union grievance with the Metropolitan Alliance of Police. This was discussed in executive session. You have a resolution approving that settlement before you.
Motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Dyke for a resolution approving agreement settlement agreement with the Metropolitan Alliance of Police authorizing the execution of that agreement. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I have one question, Mike. Um, going forward, will this revert back to the way it was?
I'm not sure I understand. I mean, we tried to make this non-presidential, but there is precedent. That's the reason for the settlement. So that's more properly, I guess, a question for John Kelly as to how this affects, uh, this issue going forward, unless Dave has.
I think the issue is, since it was not written in the contract and it had been done out of the good graces of the city's heart in previous, uh, at the end of previous contracts, that's what you're bound by, by past practice. You're not by this agreement because of the non-presidential component of this, it can be a topic for negotiations, to be clarified, next contract when it expires in twenty twenty-six. So I would strongly recommend it be a topic for discussion at that point to clarify this going forward, so you don't have this problem in the future.
Well, that was my concern.
But you're gonna have to negotiate it up for at this point.
In the work session, didn't we speak about making it a non-presidential?
It's, the language is in this.
Okay. Oh, but the words are not in the.
Right.
The, uh, I was just looking at the.
The resolution.
The revolution, right.
Roll call, please, Karen.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Before you finish the roll call, the question was still on the floor, and we didn't get, what's the next up?
So Exhibit A to the settlement agreement, uh, number five, this grievance settlement agreement shall be without precedent or prejudice to both MAP and the city for any future negotiations.
So that's the language you would want going forward.
Right, that's the language that we had discussed in the work session.
But we should still write it in, clarify it at the next contract, you're saying?
I would, because it's not written.
Well, I mean, this should be notated for, so that when we get to that point next time, everybody's not, like, forgetting about it.
Well, I, I had sent a note or an email to John Kelly to put that on a list, assuming he's still the labor attorney at that time. So I don't know who else would be here at that time to remember that. So that's, that's one concern I would have.
Maybe that big guy next to you.
Couldn't that be a, uh, grounds to reopen the contract? Cause it's financial, it's financial in nature.
Um, no, I don't believe you'd be able to do that. There's nothing in the contract that would allow you to open it on this topic alone.
Okay.
And unfortunately, since you've done it in the past without language in the contract, it's gonna, it would be very difficult to open the contract and say, well, we wanna negotiate something we did on our own, wasn't in the contract. Now we wanna put it in the contract says we don't have to do it in the future. So, and I think that, as you recall in some of the discussions, the reason this was brought up to begin with, this isn't done in normal contracts, and this isn't done in comparable communities either. This kind of thing, so that's, that was the whole purpose of even not paying it initially during the retro payment calculations.
Thank you.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number one, two, two, one.
Sorry, can you repeat that again?
One, two, two, one.
One, two, two, one. Uh, and that's it for my agenda items, but I'm happy to entertain any questions you might have.
Any questions over the city attorney?
I have some questions for you in the executive session.
I'll be waiting.
All right, thanks, Mike. Moving on to our city administrator, Tony Graff. Good evening.
There's one item for your consideration. We talked about the work session, was the updated I T support monthly blocks, what it's called, agreement with A I S. It's where we reduced our number of hours and reduced our cost. The contract has the language that we asked about to cancel the contract with a thirty-day notice. And it also allows us to carry over unused hours in the contract. Recommend approval of the agreement.
Motion would be in order.
So moved, is presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the contract with A I S Incorporated for I T support. Questions or comments of the motion?
I have a comment. As I stated at the work session, um, and many work sessions for over two years right now, we need to look for a new company that's gonna be a lot reliable and better prices. So I'm hoping this will be on the agenda pretty soon.
Yes, Mike.
Thank you, sir.
Roll call, please, Karen.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Anything else, Tony?
So I emailed out the administrative report on Friday. If there's any questions, I'll retain them for now.
No, but there's a memo that other people up here have gotten that I did not get. Is there a copy for me?
I can join this.
Okay, any other questions of city administrator? All right, thanks, Tony. Uh, moving on to our Public Works Department, Mike Ulytz is on vacation. So I'll, our city engineer, Ron Wedeman, will be handling this one, and I'll turn it over to him for some comments.
Thank you. Uh, the first item, looking for a motion to approve a pay request twenty from William Brothers Construction, Inc., with the direction to send it to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Guzal for the approval of pay request number twenty from Williams Brothers Construction Incorporated, with direction to send it to I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of thirty-three thousand, three hundred forty-five dollars and thirty-five cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Before we continue, I hate to interrupt you again, but that's not the one I was talking about. The memo I was talking about that they have that I don't have.
How about you guys can talk after, after the meeting and you can get that one to.
Well, it's for the meeting, so I was hoping to see it.
Oh, okay. Which one was it? Okay, Ron.
All right, um, do you want me to read this one? All right, go ahead, Zo. Zo's gonna read this one since she wrote the memo.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, this is the ordinance, the excavation ordinance we have existing that's been updated as we discussed at the work session. We are removing the cash deposit portion of it, increasing the bond requirement from one thousand to five thousand. And, um, differentiating between a resident putting that bond down and then the insurance required for a contractor, just referring them back to our contractor registration ordinance as written.
So moved is presented. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Guzal for the approval of an ordinance amending Title twelve Streets and Sidewalks, Chapter twelve point zero four Excavations, twelve zero four zero two zero Insurance Bond or Cash Deposit Required of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinance. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call, please.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Motion carried, ordinance number nineteen eighty-two.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll go ahead with the next item, item nine. Looking for a motion for approval of pay request number sixteen for Visaring Construction, Inc., with direction to send to the I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of one million, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents.
So moved is presented.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of pay request number sixteen from Visaring Construction Incorporated with direction to send it to I E P A for approval and dispersment for a total amount of one million, nine hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and fifty-nine cents. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, and all of these agenda items were discussed in the, in the work session, the last two work sessions that we had. Okay, moving on to our city engineer, Ron Wedeman.
Okay, thank you. All right, looking for a motion to award a contract and have the mayor execute the contract documents with Superior Road Striping, Inc., for the Gaylord and Cedarwood Drive Paying Marking Program, section number twenty-five, zero, 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 zero hyphen zero, zero hyphen G M, in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven sixty-seven, fifty.
So moved is presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert to approve a resolution, or to award the contract and have the mayor execute the contract documents with Superior Road Striping for the Gaylord Road and Cedarwood Drive Payment Marking Program in the amount of twenty-six thousand, seven hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, the next item, to approve a resolution approving an agreement with the Crest Hill Business, with, for the Crest Hill Business Park Alternative Truck Route Preliminary Engineering Design Phase B, binding between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Christopher Burke.
So moved. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to approve a resolution approving an agreement with, for the Crest Hill Business Park Alternative Truck Route Preliminary Engineering Design Phase B, binding between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Christopher B. Burke Engineering Limited. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve twenty-two.
The next item is to approve a resolution approving an agreement for the Division Roadway Rehabilitation Improvement Design Engineering Services, binding between City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and V Three Companies. This was discussed.
Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Apiti to approve a resolution approving an agreement for the Division Roadway Rehabilitation Improvement Design Engineering Services, binding between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and V Three Companies Limited. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve twenty-three.
The next item is to approve a resolution approving an agreement for a three-lot subdivision of real estate identified by PIN number eleven dash oh four dash two nine dash three oh two dash zero one three dash zero 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 zero, binding between the City of Crest Hill, um, City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Robinson Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Guzal to approve a resolution approving an agreement for the three-lot subdivision of real estate identified by PIN number eleven dash zero four dash twenty-nine dash three oh two dash zero one three dash zero 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 zero, binding between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Robinson Engineering Limited. Questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Uh, Ron, just a clarifying question here. When we move forward with the city park and we give, uh, ownership of the playground to the park district, will that need to be subdivided again?
Correct. Then we'll address that at that time. Um, right now, we're just trying to take the lot we're sitting on now, get that into three subdivisions. Once that agreement gets signed and we actually move through the project phase, we'll, we'll, we'll then do another subdivision for that piece out.
Great, thank you.
Roll call, please, Karen.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve twenty-four.
And the last item I have is approve a resolution approving the mayor to execute the M F T forms for the maintenance on the Illinois Highway Code, estimate of maintenance costs and maintenance engineering to be formed by a consulting engineer for the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five M F T program, as included in the two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five city budget.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Guzal, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to approve a resolution approving the mayor to execute the M F T forms for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code, estimate of maintenance costs and maintenance engineering to be performed by a consulting engineer for two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five M F T program as included in the two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five city budget. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kuba.
Yes.
Scott Dyke.
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson.
Yes.
Claudia Guzal.
Yes.
Tina Oberlin.
Yes.
Marcus Apiti.
Yes.
Nate Albert.
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve twenty-five.
And that is all I have for tonight, unless there's any questions by council.
Any questions of city engineer?
I have one question, Ron. Weber and Knapp, um, any, any idea when they're gonna start?
They actually, last week, the, uh, communications contractor was doing some relocation. Um, they were supposed to finish early this week. I didn't go out and take a look, but then the other, the, uh, the roadway contractor should be starting soon after that. So the next week or two, you should start seeing cones and barricades going up.
And they were digging over there today.
Yeah, were they? I didn't, I didn't get out, so but they're.
I saw them on my way to the dock.
Yeah, they're, right now, we got utilities moving some of the Comcast stuff out of the, or the communications stuff out of the way before the roadway project starts. before the roadway project starts.
Okay, and lastly, uh, on Boreo, the north part of Boreo, are they gonna get to that this year?
Uh, that is actually all of Boreo that has previously been resurfaced is in this year's street resurfacing. Some of it is options, um, alternatives, so basically what we're gonna do is we bid the whole thing out with some other locations as presented to council before, and then we're gonna see what the cost comes in, and then we'll have to make some choices based on what the bids are. So if we come in at, at budget, we're gonna do it all. If not, uh, we'll be coming back to you on what parts of Boreo we're gonna do and what parts we might not do this year. But the goal is to try to get all of Boreo done this year.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Ron. Uh, moving on to community development, our community and economic development director, Ron Metzner. Good evening, Ron.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Um, the first item I have on the agenda tonight is seeking the council's approval of an ordinance amending Title Five, Chapter five point seven four, four, registration of vacant and defaulted mortgage property, Section five point seven four point zero two zero definitions, and adding Section five point seven four point zero five five, inspection and registration of real property that is not subject to a mortgage foreclosure of the City of Crest Hill, City Code of Ordinances. This is something that was discussed at the April twenty-ninth works session meeting, and essentially, we're looking to, um, expand the scope of properties that are required to vacant, to include vacant properties that would need to be registered with the city and would be subject to the maintenance and security obligations currently found in Chapter five point seven four of the City Code. Through this expansion, uh, the city will receive more data that will allow us to, uh, be more effective from a code enforcement standpoint. Uh, there is a relatively small projected increase in the amount of revenue that the city would receive as a result of this, um, change to the ordinance.
Motion would be in order.
So moved is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Gazal to approve an ordinance amending Title Five, Chapter five point seventy-four, registration of vacant and defaulted mortgage property, Section five point seventy-four point zero two zero definitions, and adding Section five point seven four point zero five five inspection and registration of real property that is not subject to a mortgage foreclosure of the City of Crest Hill Code of Ordinance. Questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Well, I'd just like to thank Zo and Ron both for working on all these and getting them together for us. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Roll call, Karen.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Motion carried, ordinance number nineteen eighty-three.
The second item I have on tonight's agenda is seeking the approval of a resolution for a professional services agreement with HARA Property Register LLC to require owners of vacant properties in mortgage default to register their property with the city. Uh, this is, uh, entering into a contract with a vendor that will create and then manage an online platform that would allow, uh, folks that have eligible properties to register those properties via the online platform. Uh, HARA, under this agreement, would replace the, uh, former vendor that the city had that, uh, was engaged with, that provided these services that went bankrupt last year. So at this point in time, we don't actively have an active, uh, registration program. Once this is adopted, we'll move quickly with the representatives of HARA to, uh, get a new registration platform up and running so that the city can start registering those properties, obtaining the, uh, necessary data for the ownership of those properties that will help code enforcement actions. And again, there is a, uh, a charge that goes along with each one of these registrations that will not only pay the cost of, um, the professional services agreement with HARA, but it will also help offset some of the city's code enforcement costs related to these properties.
So moved is presented.
Second.
Who seconded it?
Scott.
We have a motion by Alderman Person Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Dyke to approve a resolution for a professional service agreement with HARA Property Register LLC to require owners of vacant properties in mortgage default to register their property to the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve twenty-six.
And the third item I have on the agenda is seeking council approval of an ordinance granting a special use permit in parking variation with respect to certain property, real property located within the corporate boundaries of Crest Hill, the application of Platinum Triple Play LLC doing business as D-Bats Lockport. The Plan Commission made a unanimous recommendation on, uh, April eleventh to approve the special use and variances involved with this particular application. City council discussed those, uh, variance requests and the recommendation of the Plan Commission at the last workshop meeting. Uh, this would allow for the owners of, of the proposed D-Bats to completely renovate a existing vacant thirteen thousand square foot warehouse facility on the south side of, uh, Caton Farm Road into a new youth baseball and softball training academy, and build a new parking lot and, uh, paved access improvements to facilitate safe in and out, uh, traffic to the proposed facility. Tonight, the owner of the property or owner of the project, Edith Murillo, is here. If you have any questions for her regarding the scope of the business, but I think this will be a, uh, a good use for that property and definitely an improvement to what's been there for probably decades.
Okay, does council have any questions of Ron? Anyone from D-Bats like to come up to the podium, make any comments? Name for the record, please.
Edith Murillo? And I'm sorry, I have a little bit of laryngitis. Just wanted to thank the panel, thank Ron, thank everyone here, uh, my partnership, all six partners for here this, uh, this evening. Obviously, looking for the good news and the final approval, uh, but we are looking forward to break, bringing, uh, D-Bats Lockport, AKA Crest Hill. I know the, the, uh, the back and forth on the name, um, but we do appreciate all of your attentiveness, all of the hard work and efforts Zo and everyone here again, uh, for rooting us on from day one. Um, and we look forward to hopefully building number two and naming it Crest Hill after all the requests.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much on behalf of my partners.
You, you know how sometimes when women get married, they hyphenate their names?
Tina, I am so glad to meet you in person and I'm glad you're feeling better.
Thank you.
Number two, I promise you.
Any other questions?
Can you introduce the rest of the partners?
Absolutely, absolutely. If you guys wanna stand up, please. We have Lucia Murillo, Patrick Dillon, Eva Lebano, Miguel Inigas, and then my husband Jaime Murillo, who had to step away with the little one, and again, Edith Murillo at your service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
You got a lot of curves wearing that white Sox hats because they're tough to watch this. They're tough to watch this year, and I'm a Sox fan.
We're divided, two-thirds versus one-third Cubs fans, Sox fans, but we make it work. Thank you, good night.
All right, so.
Welcome to Crest Hill.
Thank you.
We have to vote on it first. So let me ask.
So welcome to Crest Hill.
But I gave away the, I gave it up.
Hang on, legally, I have to ask, is there anyone that would like to speak for or against the applicant of Platinum Triple Play D-Bats and their request for a special use for an indoor recreational facility and a parking variation to permit the operation of an indoor batting cage and baseball and softball training facility located at four twenty-five Caton Farm Road? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and your address is optional. Second request, if anyone would like to speak for or against the request of Platinum Triple Play D-Bats for a special use, uh, request for an indoor recreational facility for an operation of an indoor batting cage and baseball and softball training facility at four two five Caton Farm Road. Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, your address is optional. And the third time, anyone would like to speak for or against the request of Tri- Triple Play D-Bats for a special use variation for parking and for a recreational facility at four twenty-five Caton Farm Road? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record, and your address is optional. Let the record show that no one has approached the podium. Counsel, before you, you have a recommendation from the Plan Commission for approval, and you also have before you an ordinance granting a special use permit and parking variation with respect to certain real property located within the ver- within the corporate boundaries of the City of Crest Hill, the application of Platinum Triple Play LLC doing business as D-Bats Lockport. Motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Gazal, seconded by Alderman Zepidi for approval. Questions or comments in regards to the motion?
Yes, both of us. Welcome to Crest Hill, it's legal now.
Man, it's not legal yet.
Welcome to Crest Hill, that's my comment.
We still have a little.
Bienvenidos a la ciudad de Crest Hill.
Roll call, Karen.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
I gave it up earlier, yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Motion carried, ordinance number nineteen eighty-four.
Okay, welcome to the City of Crest Hill. I think it's gonna be a bigger movement in that area, and, uh, I think it's gonna be something very good for all the young people of not only Crest Hill, but the surrounding communities that surround Crest Hill also. So congratulations and welcome.
Thank you so much.
Lovely.
Get your Cubs hat.
We have a forum.
Hey, if they went two and twenty-two, they can go twenty-two and two, right? And they'd only be five hundred. All right, last one, Ron.
We're asking for, seeking approval of a resolution, an agreement for elevator inspection slash maintenance binding between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Conay Care. Conay Care is the, uh, the firm, or Conay is the parent company of Conay Care, and Conay is the firm that manufactured and installed the elevators, the two elevators that are in City Hall. Um, this agreement would, um, provide for three annual inspections and routine maintenance on those elevators and an annual weight test which is required in order for them to be certified as, and comply with state, uh, elevator inspection requirements.
So moved is presented. Second.
Motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of a resolution approving an agreement for elevator inspection, maintenance binding between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Conay Care. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Uh, no, I just feel that the cost for those visits of over thirty thousand dollars each time's a little high, and I think we could've found it cheaper elsewhere.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve twenty-seven.
Okay, anything else, Ron and Zo?
I have one more item on the next page.
Oh, I missed that one. You're right.
Get my money's worth tonight.
Okay.
We're seeking approval of a resolution approving an agreement for H V A C slash mechanical inspection and maintenance binding between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Kerwin Mechanical Services. Um, this is a, uh, annual maintenance agreement, inspection and maintenance agreement, uh, with Kerwin for the eleven furnaces, furnaces and eight condensers that, uh, serve this building, and it would involve, um, Kerwin coming out multiple times a year, uh, four times a year to inspect those, change filters, and do any minor, uh, kind of preventative maintenance, uh, that's necessary.
So moved is presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin for a resolution approving an agreement for H V A C mechanical inspections and maintenance binding between the City of Crest Hill, Will County, Illinois, and Kerwin Mechanical Services. Questions or comments in regards to the motion? Roll call.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Again, I vote no on this. I just feel three thousand dollars four times a year is way too much for them to take and, take a look at our heat and air conditioning.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
No.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve twenty-eight.
Okay.
With that, if you have any other questions on any other unrelated items, I'll do my best to address those.
Any questions of community development? Okay, thanks, Ron and Zo. Uh, moving on to our police department, we have our deputy chief, Ryan Dobsec here this evening. Good evening, Ryan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am seeking the approval of the DakrTek LLC Master Software Licensing Agreement. As was pre- previously discussed at one of the work sessions, um, again, uh, before administrative hearings, we used a system, uh, called Municipal Systems Incorporated. They were purchased by Dakra, and, uh, this police department's already using Dakra for a number of things, but, um, this new agreement would allow us, uh, on the police department's side, um, to do parking tickets and administrative citations electronically. We're currently doing state citations electronically, and it would also allow the building department to go away from paper citations and use e-citations. And so my partner over there at the administrative hearings, um, uh, will be, make that process go a lot smoother, so.
So moved.
Seeking approval.
Was, this was already budgeted for?
So the, it, it has been budgeted, um, and, and again, the, the police department and the building department's gonna split the cost of this going forward.
Second. Then I have questions.
We have a motion by Alderman Albert, seconded by Alderman Person Oberlin for the approval of DakrTek LLC Master Software Licensing Agreement, the amount of thirty thousand dollars to be split between the police department and the building department. Question, Tina?
Yes, you said that you're both gonna utilize it, but they're not gonna be able to see your information and vice versa.
Correct.
When you log in, you'll be logging into a certain element of it that only services building you there. So, okay, that was one question. And then I see down here, it says this will cut down on clerical data entry as well. That's good to know, we'll, you know, need less, uh, hours, uh.
Right.
Clerks.
Right.
Roll call, police Karen.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Zepidi?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, that's the only agenda item I had, just to review a, a few items, um, just wanted to announce, uh, that our annual cop on a rooftop where we, uh, do the Special Olympics fundraiser will be next Friday, May seventeenth, approximately five AM to around noon, will be at the, uh, Dunkin' Donuts on Plainfield Road where we've done it, uh, for many years in the past. So we'd like to invite everybody, uh, from the council and, uh, community to come out and, uh, join us for a good cause on that day. Um, as you can see, I'm, uh, modeling one of our, uh, body cameras. Uh, last Thursday and Friday were some long days where we had Motorola come out and give the department, uh, some department-wide training, and so those have been deployed as of Friday at six PM. So, uh, we've been moving forward on those. Um, one thing that the chief did want me to mention is there was a squad that had been damaged that we thought previously was going to be repaired, and again, it was an accident that the, the city, the police department was not at fault. It was another party that was at fault. Unfortunately, we just got word today, um, that the costs are gonna be more than the vehicle is gonna be worth. Worth, and so, um, the chief will be, um, coming to the council, uh, trying to get, uh, uh, funds for replacing that vehicle. Um, but he just wanted me to.
What, was that one of them that was, you were wanting to replace?
No.
Of course not.
No. No.
Okay.
No, this was a two-year-old vehicle that, um, unfortunately, um, we, we worked at length with the insurance company and, um, but unfortunately, the repairs came in way too expensive, so.
But if it's the other person's fault, don't, doesn't their insurance company have to reimburse the city?
There is, again, the way that it was described to me is that there's a certain amount of money where they're just gonna to, the insurance companies are gonna total it out, so, um, a-again, we'll, we'll have funds, we'll be getting funds, uh, from the insurance company, um, but they'll basically have to go to a new vehicle. So that'll be something in the coming work session that the chief will be presenting, just wanted to give you a little bit of a heads up on that. Um, I don't have any other items, be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of police department? Alright, thanks Ryan. Uh, moving on to the mayor's report, uh, first item of business is the appointment of an interim finance director. Um, you have information in your packet of Coran Johnson. Um, this was vetted by Tony Graff and Dave Strahl. Her information is in the packet, I believe that Coran will be a good fit for the city of Crest Hill. I would ask for a motion for the approval of appointing Coran Johnson as our interim finance director.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderwoman Gazal, seconded by Alderperson Oberlin for the approval of the appointment of interim finance director Coran Johnson. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, in conjunction with that, you have before you a resolution approving the appointment of Coran Johnson as interim finance director and approving the employee leasing agreement by and between the city of Crest Hill and GovTemp's USA LLC for Coran Johnson services as interim finance director, motion would be in order.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to approve a resolution approving the appointment of Coran Johnson Dyson as interim finance director and approving an employee leasing agreement by and between the city of Crest Hill and GovTemp's USA LLC for Coran Johnson Dyson services as interim finance director. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve twenty-nine.
Okay, we have Coran in the audience, Coran, would you like to, anything, make any comments at the podium, and welcome to the city of Crest Hill.
First, I just wanna say thank you guys for the opportunity and for the invite, um, it was such a quick turnaround, um, the call last week from Tony and I'm looking forward to working with everyone.
And your first day of employment is tomorrow.
Yes, so I'm gonna meet with some individuals on tomorrow, so, um, hopefully I get a chance to meet with some of the other council members as well, so, looking forward to working with everyone.
Okay, welcome to the city of Crest Hill, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome to Crest Hill.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, next under the mayor's report is a, uh, an approval of resolution approving an amendment number three residential electric aggregation agreement with MC Squared Energy Services LLC. We had Adam Hoover here at the work session last Monday night, uh, he's the representative from NYMEC who we've been with for the last ten or twelve years since we started the aggreg- aggregation. I will tell you that the numbers are very similar this year with Commonwealth Edison as was explained by Adam at the work session, but it still is a cost savings, uh, to the city of Crest Hill for this agreement. Uh, I will find out probably within the next couple of days, um, which, which agreement we will go with, it'll either be a one-year, two-year or three-year commitment. Um, with the prices being so close, uh, probably we'll, we'll see what the numbers are, but I would think that maybe the one-year agreement may be the best and then see what next year brings to offer with, um, with Commonwealth Edison, but that will depend on the numbers that are presented to me in the next few days. So I would ask for approval of the agreement.
So moved. Second.
We have motion by Alderman Jefferson, seconded by Alderman Albert to approve a resolution approving amendment number three to residential electrical aggregation agreement with MC Squared Energy Services LLC and that is the same company that we have been doing business with. Uh, so nothing will change. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carried, resolution number twelve thirty.
We have a one or two or three-year agreement, right?
Yes, that's the three choices that you get.
So what do, what, what is council voting on this evening?
I don't know.
Well, I give me the authority basically to pick which one, that's how it's always been.
So which one are we picking?
Well, I won't know until we get the numbers. I'll make a decision in regards to the numbers.
Uh, I don't know, I feel like the paperwork in our packet says one year, so.
Uh, is that correct?
One year.
One dash three.
One, two, three. Okay, next on the agenda is a request of the American Italian Cultural Society for a one-day liquor entertainment license waiver. Uh, Mr. John Mauser, the president of the Italian Cultural Society is in the audience, he's asking for a waiver of the fifty-dollar permit. They wanna do a outdoor appreciation membership picnic on their property on Saturday, June first, two thousand twenty-four. Um, and also a club member will be providing the musical entertainment, the event will be from two PM to six PM. So I would ask for a motion for the, uh, waiver of the fifty-dollar permit, all of this was vetted with our police chief Ed Clark also. It will be on their property and it will be only for the members of the American Italian Cultural Society.
So moved as presented.
Second.
Motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal for the approval of the waiver of the permit fee, questions or comments? Roll call.
Mark Sapiti?
Abstain.
Nate Albert?
Abstain.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, that's all the agenda items, just some announcements that I need to make. Uh, the first is for our memorial, oh, I should say, is John, anything you'd like to say at the podium?
Hi, I'm John Mauser, new president of American Italian Cultural Society, I want to thank you guys for, uh, tonight, uh, approving our permit. Uh, me being a president, we're starting to, starting a new thing, our club, we're giving back to our members and especially, uh, we've been in this city for, uh, thirty, thirty-six years, I think now. So we look forward to working with you guys in the future and, and I thank you very much.
Okay, thanks John, have a good night.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, couple announcements, first is in regards to Memorial Day, two thousand twenty-four, our ceremony is gonna be on Monday, May twenty-seventh at two o'clock PM right outside the door here, uh, by the flags and the memorial stones. Our guest speaker this year is a Crest Hill resident, uh, by the name of Denise Carson. Denise is the ambassador for a group called Honor and Remember of Illinois, she is the ambassador for Illinois, um, um, which deals with, uh, giving back to those, uh, families whose, um, whose veterans who were killed in the, the, in their services. So, she will be our guest speaker, we will also have, uh, the Frankfurt Brass Band here for musical entertainment which will begin at one forty PM on that day and they'll have a pre-concert for twenty minutes. The program will last, um, about one hour, we will have, uh, remembrance for all of our veterans who have passed away and we will also honor our two slain police officers who were killed in the line of duty for the city of Crest Hill. It'll be a very solemn, uh, ceremony honoring those individuals. We have about eleven hundred and fifty names on the memorial stones outside, um, with all the wars that this, uh, country has had over the years. So we certainly want to thank them for their sacrifices, for their commitment and their services, not only to their country but for, to the city for the freedoms that we enjoy today as a country. So, please join us again on Monday, May twenty-seventh at two o'clock PM outside in the memorial garden. In case there is inclement weather, we will move inside here into this chamber and there will be light refreshments offered after the ceremony. Uh, next thing I'd like to, uh, make an announcement on is I received a letter of resignation on May second from one of our plan commissioners, Mr. Jan Plato. And he states that my last meeting as planning commissioner of the city of Crest Hill will be May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. I will be retiring and moving out of state, I would like to thank you for all the opportunities given to me as a planning commissioner. I will miss being in that position and the camaraderie of my fellow commissioners. So I'd like to thank, uh, Jan Plato, I believe I appointed him in two thousand fifteen. Um, so he's had about nine years on the plan commission, thank him for his dedication, so there is a three-year term that is available and vacant, um, so any resident of the city of Crest Hill who is interested can certainly apply for, for the position of a plan commissioner for the city of Crest Hill. Um, I will accept all, um, applications, do an interview process and I will make a, uh, I'll bring forth an appointment for the advice and consent of city council. So if you are interested, if anyone is interested, please fill out, there's an application form if you go on the website. Um, fill it out with a cover lever, letter and a resume to myself, uh, here at City Hall two zero six zero zero City Center Boulevard. And finally, um, with the passing of Alderman John Verche, uh, we tried to be very respectful tonight. Um, it was a tough week for everybody here at City Hall. We certainly want to honor John here tonight, that is, uh, why you see the bunting outside, I'd like to thank our maintenance man, uh, Tony Hlaska for the bunting both outside and inside this building. I'd like to thank, uh, Fred C. Dame's Funeral Home, these were the flowers that were at the wake and, uh, I was able to get them over here. Uh, we certainly wanted to honor John tonight in this room with those flowers, uh, out of respect for his forty-five years of service to the city of Crest Hill. So with that, there is a vacancy for the position of Alderman in Ward One. So I'm working with our attorney Mike Steph, but I believe there's a total of sixty days, but I have to make an a, an appointment to fill the vacancy of the empty seat of Alderman Verche. So you have to be a Ward One resident for that. Um, again, anyone that would like to apply for that position, I would ask that you please send a cover letter and a copy of your resume to me, um, here at City Hall two zero six zero zero City Center Boulevard. Um, you must live within the boundaries of Ward One, I will be accepting all applications and I will be doing interviews of all the candidates, I will then bring an appointment to the city council with their advice and consent. Um, so, again, we certainly want to offer our condolences to Alderman Verche. That was a long, long run that he had here with the city for forty-five years, so, um, it's gonna be some big shoes to fill for that gentleman. But if you are interested, please fill out that, uh, your letters and cover letters and return it to me. That's it for the mayor?
Mayor, correct me if I'm wrong, but they had to have lived here for at least a year or two, is that correct?
Correct.
I believe you are correct. Okay, any other questions?
Yes, can you post those, um, both, um, vacancy on the, on the Facebook?
Mm-hmm.
Cause many people don't watch the meetings.
I will do that tomorrow morning, I sw- out of respect for Alderman Verche, I didn't want to make any announcements, uh, prior to and, um, um, we will post that on Facebook, we will post that on the, uh, website and if I can catch our audiovisual, uh, gentleman Bill here, before we go into executive session, I'll see if he can put something on, on the, uh,
Cable.
On the cable scroll, and if not, he'll be here for plan commission next Thursday, correct? And I can have the information for him there to put it on. Okay, alright, um, moving on to-
Mayor, mayor, before you go, uh, I think, uh, we overlooked, uh, when Claudia's father passed, we didn't have a moment of silence for her father when he passed and we didn't have where we sent the flower or anything for her loss. I think that was overlooked and I think, you know, I don't know if it's too late how Claudia feels about it.
It's nice of you to think of me, but I'm okay. The mayor doesn't recognize me anyway, he didn't even give me condolences, but it's okay.
I just believe it was overlooked by, you know, we didn't have it and so I just feel bad that, you know, you didn't get that courtesy.
Did reach out to me and, uh, so has our attorney, so that's more than that for me, you can't push people to, to treat you nice and kind. I'm always discriminated in the city. The mayor holds moments of silence for past all the women that her husband passed, but I'm still sitting here, but the mayor doesn't acknowledge me.
I believe I made comments.
You haven't, let's, let's pull the minutes. Let's pull the minutes, but it's okay.
Alright, we'll move on to our city clerks report, our deputy city clerk, Karen Kzerk is here tonight, Karen?
I do not have anything today.
Any questions of clerk's office?
I just wanna thank, uh, you and, um, well, in the office today, over these past few weeks during my, um, unfortunate hospitalization for all your assistance in getting these packets delivered to my home in a timely manner so that I could participate, um, remotely and not miss on what was going on, it was really important to me. Uh, so I wanna thank you and please tell everybody else how much I appreciate it.
I will, thank you.
And the police.
You're welcome.
And again, I, I'd like to say, I am far from perfect, I will be the first to admit that I am far from perfect, but I certainly want to thank Karen, Sam, Maribel, Tony Graff, Tony Hlaska for helping with what you see here tonight with the flowers and everything else, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks Karen, um, moving on to our city treasurer's report, our treasurer Glenn Cockland, good evening Glenn.
Good evening mayor and council, first off, I'd like to offer my prayers and blessings and, and, and hoping for peace for the Verche family. Johnny, be missed, God bless ya. Um, next off, I'd like to thank on behalf of myself, uh, office staff and the council that, uh, would appreciate it. I would like to thank Lisa Banabats for a really incredible few years of service we had. Um, Lisa had this beautiful ability to do what's, what was right all the time regardless of how convenient it was. And I will very much miss her, she had a list of accompaniment, accomplishments that were, were miles long and, uh, I'll never forget the progress that she brought us. She's punctual, accurate, responsible, unmatched professionalism with, uh, a real heavy dose of in- integrity and she's served us very, very well. So I'd like to publicly thank her on behalf of the city. And that's my goodbye. Now my hello. Coran, welcome to the city of Crest Hill, I very much look forward to working with you and, uh, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Uh, one action item, I'd ask for the, uh, uh, approval of the list of bills which were issued through May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-four. That totals one million eight hundred eighty-three thousand, nine hundred nine dollars and thirty-five cents.
So moved as presented. Did you miss that?
I did.
Second.
We have motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the approval of the list of bills, questions or comments? Roll call.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you all for that, just a couple of announcements, one being the quarterly compensation time buyback for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-four through March thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four. That total is two thousand, uh, twenty-seven thousand, two hundred fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents. Then there was our regular overtime payroll from April eighth, two thousand twenty-four through April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-four and the amount of two hundred forty-four thousand, eight hundred six dollars and thirteen cents. The next agenda item is the, uh, approval of non-union employee salary increases for fiscal year two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-five and I ask that that be moved to executive session? And I think I need a motion to have that moved to that.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderperson Oberlin, seconded by Alderwoman Gazal, for executive session for the non-union employee salary increases for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five?
I guess it'd be to, to vote on it after executive session, you wanna help me on that one Mike?
Yeah, the, the action item will be after the executive session, so we'll go into executive session and then if necessary, we'll come back and you can act on it or table it, it depends on what happens in executive session.
Okay, asking for deviation from agenda, thank you.
The motion area in the second, agree?
Yes.
Okay. Roll call police Karen.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Oberlin?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Um, can I also comment on, uh, the, our departing Lisa, our departed, I should say? Uh, I, it was such a pleasure to work with such a professional person who followed the laws, did things the correct way and, um, unfortunately for us, uh, the fact that she did that ruffled feathers, which is something we should've been doing all along. We should be following the laws and the rules and the ordinances of this state and this, this government. And she was a consummate professional, she was prompt in responses, she was a pleasure all the way across the world. She will be so greatly missed and it's really, uh, it's a sad day for the city that she left. I do welcome you though, Coran, no, nothing, nothing bearing on you, just my personal opinion on the departed Lisa.
Yeah, I wanna echo those, uh, sentiments about Lisa, I'm not gonna go on, everything that was said, I agree with, she was, uh, consummate, consummate- She was a consummate professional. She was, she went above and beyond, never asked any questions, never called in. It'll be a tremendous loss to the city.
Welcome Karan.
And I too would like to echo the thoughts of my colleagues about Lisa. You know, she, she had a no-nonsense approach to those numbers and she kept them in line and she actually brought some programs to the city that we can benefit from even after she's gone. I told her on her last day, I said, "You'll be gone, but not forgotten because some of the things you put in place here is gonna stay here and it's gonna have your name attached to it." And saying that, you know, I know that we live in a world where no one is irreplaceable. But now we have Karan and I welcome you here and we can continue to move forward in that direction.
I just would like also to, not only what everyone else has said, but also to say that I know many times I called Lisa for different things and different reports that, you know, maybe you've never saw, but I had questions and she would give me all the information. She was really helpful and helped me decipher what it was I was looking at when I had questions on it that, you know, in the list of bills and different things like that. So she was really a source of information on so many things with, you know, the costs and everything with this building and public works. I mean, she brought it all to the forefront for us. I mean, she really, you know, opened our eyes to a lot of things and I know she did, went way above what her job title was and handled more things than she really should have and did it thanklessly. So I just gotta say thank you to her for her time here and all that she did. She'll be missed and looking forward to working our new person there. Welcome aboard.
Scott, one thing I forgot to mention, you made me think of it, was, you know, we hear this word transparency bantered about all the time. But she was a living, breathing specimen of putting that out there. She made sure we were aware of things. She was very transparent. Nothing got hidden from us. And that, you can't replace that kind of dedication. And I just hope, I hope that that continues in the future because we can't be left in the dark anymore. We need to have that transparency continue.
That's all I have. Thank you very much and again, welcome.
Okay, thanks Glenn. Unfinished business. We have nothing on the agenda, anyone? New business, anybody?
Me. I'll go to the podium. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
I have intent to work with you regardless of our differences. I am taking this opportunity to bring the light that the city is a notorious crossroads. You have no sense of urgency or bothered by the number of city department heads who have quit under your tenure as a mayor. Especially during the past two years, you function as if everything is business as usual. While the remaining staff are panicked and are left in the dark, what you plan is to replace the department heads who have left. The city is facing a financial issue. Do you have a plan on how the city is going to be financially substantial going forward? During your fiscal year two thousand five budget hearing, when you were asked the comment on the budget that had been presented, all you said that you were saving your comments for a later time. Really, Mayor? Really, time? Later on? What, a year later? The citizens of Crest Hill deserve better than that from their mayor. You showed no concern during the budget hearing over almost seven million budget deficit and it was presented. You understand there are many roads within the city that they are rated in poor condition. What is your recommendation on how you will fund the repair of these roads going forward? Do you have a lay awake at night worrying about this? I ask you because I do, Mayor. I don't sleep at nights thinking about our city and the situation where we are. I would like also to draw your attention to the fact that your key positions of the department heads and the city administrator are all vacant and filled by contracted employees who do not have any investment in the city in long term. Also, are you aware of the significant expenses of having temporary employees fill these positions versus hiring full-time city employees? The city is paying close to sixteen grand a week for these temporary employees. This was before adding temporary employees to fill the director of finance role. The cost may reach close to twenty grand a week. Is this fair to the taxpayer of the city of Crest Hill? They deserve better from that, Mayor. Your previous city administrator resigned in May twenty twenty-three. To date, this position remains open and is currently being filled by temporary employees. The following positions are currently being held by temporary employees. City administrator, director of finance, director of public works, director of human resource, city planner. You are also entrusting long-term decisions to be made by people who do not have long-term investment in the city. The citizens of Crest Hill deserve better from you. We are desperate in need for leadership to reshape the culture of the environment within Crest Hill. Our staff deserve better than having to report to temporary employees who have no stake in the city of Crest Hill. It saddens me that the last person who held director position resigned because of you. Yes, Mayor, because of you. I don't know how you can sleep at night knowing you constantly ruin people's lives. Many staff members have left because of you. I stand here from you. Yes, I'm shaking because I'm upset. I'm upset. The director of finance held a position with integrity and transparency, especially with the city council member. She was the individual who brought the light, the spending, which is the council was unaware of related to the new public works building in addition to the new city hall building. Instead of you praising the transparency, you choose to be angry and decide not to communicate with your director of finance, which I'm not sure you as a mayor had the right to do. You are elected to do the best job possible for all stakeholders for the city, which includes keeping your city council informed of essential information such as total cost of these buildings, as I mentioned. Your lack of leadership has been noticed by current staff members in addition to council members. And this is concerning. I am also aware that you have allowed elected officials to be verbally attacked in city council meetings as well as during executive session meetings and never stepped in to stop the obvious behavior. This should not be accepted by anyone and should not be tolerated by you as a mayor. As a mayor, you must listen to all council members and you must answer our questions. As a female, I feel that when I am direct, it disdotes me as being aggressive. You continue to ignoring my questions and concerns. Compare this to where my male council members are direct. You label them as retive. You have an issue with strong women who have strong opinions and that is an issue for me. If the city has any chances of success, you must be transparent with the council. You must put your personal agenda aside and do what's best for Crest Hill as a whole. I hope you find the strength to take a close look at yourself and the way you're currently leading the city. I pray every day for you, Mayor. Every night before I sleep, I pray. You found me last year when they were putting the stones. I was there by myself praying. I was praying for the city. Should take some such needed time for self-reflection. Years ago, you used to state maturity rules. When issues were voted by the council, that's clearly not the case now. If you are respectful of all the council members regardless of their gender, the city council may have a chance to unify and ultimately come together as one unified governing body and do the absolute best we can for the city of Crest Hill. For the residents' sake, Mayor, I am respectfully asking you to listen to what we have to say here tonight. Please reflect on your duties as a mayor that you took on oath for. The city of Crest Hill deserved better. You know, I have supported you many times. Many years ago, you offered me the olive branch and I offered you the tree over and over. But you choose constantly walk all over me. You don't treat me equally as all these elected officials. The fact that you wouldn't say condolences to me, demnalogize me. You don't have to do it publicly. You could give me a stinky fart. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll wait for Alderman Gazal to get back to her seat. Committee liaison reports. We have Alderman Dykes on the agenda tonight for the Heritage Corridor, Route sixty-six sponsorship. Scott?
Thank you, Mayor. I brought this to council's attention at the work session. The sponsorship is four hundred dollars for a day. Then we have to pay for a hundred dollar gift card and another fifty dollar gift card from two businesses. We decided to do two days for a total of eight hundred dollars plus then three hundred dollars for the gift card. So there'll be a total of eleven hundred dollars for that sponsorship. They're gonna be sending over an invoice to us. We need also to vote on the mayor to sign, put a signature on the contract also. So I'll make a motion that we do this promotion with Heritage Corridor with WGN Radio. Make that a form of a motion.
All right, motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Overland for approval of advertising between Heritage Corridor, Route sixty-six, radio sponsorship and WGN Radio in the amount of eleven hundred dollars. Questions or comments to the motion?
Scott, I just want to thank you that you're, you know, trying to get the city out there in a positive way because God knows we need that. And I was watching one of the home shows while I was recovering and they were focused on Route sixty-six in that particular state and what a big deal it was. So, you know, it's not just here, it's all the way across. So thank you for working.
Well, it started here, Route sixty-six.
I know, but thank you.
You got on or you ended here, one of the two, so from here to California.
Thank you for your effort.
Also, so everyone knows, one of the gift cards, the places that we got gift cards from was Richka's, Firewater, Southern Cafe and Prairie Bluff. Those are the four businesses that we'll be promoting with this.
Thank you for doing this, Scott.
Roll call Karen.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Daryl Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Also, I'll make a motion for the mayor to affix his signature to the contract for this.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Dyke, seconded by Alderman Jefferson for the mayor to affix his signature to the advertising with WGN Radio. Questions or comments? Roll call.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Daryl Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, city council comments?
I have something for Lades. I'm still waiting to hear back from them. I'm not sure what the holdup is, but they did tell me that the annual Lades memorial service will be on Sunday, June ninth at eleven AM. I'm still waiting on any further instructions from the new people who are taking it over. I'm getting a little nervous though, it's only a month away. But I placed several phone calls while I was home. I'll let you know if anything changes. Thank you.
Okay, city council comments? Positive city council comments? I think you'd like to share with your constituents, begin with Ward Four, the evening, Alderman Kubo?
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Alderman Albert?
Yeah, Mayor, I'm gonna take a minute or so here. Wanted to thank Plan Commissioner Jan Platau for all of his years of service as a Plan Commissioner. He served as the chairman for quite some time and led the Plan Commission well. Also want to thank Lisa Banavitz as well for her years of service here to our city. She did a fantastic job. Welcome, Karan. As far as Alderman Verchay, I think it wasn't, maybe it was mentioned, I just, my mind's a little clouded. But John was one of the very first police officers here in the city of Crest Hill. And at the wake, I think somebody handed Christine a picture from nineteen sixty-three with him in his police uniform with one of the Crest Hill police cars. A very, very cool picture. John with a couple of the other police officers. But aside to that, he was also the, up until his passing, was the longest-serving Crest, longest-serving Crest Hill Lion. He was inducted in nineteen seventy, so he served the Lions Club for fifty-four years. Everybody knows that John had a heck of a sense of humor. I used to joke around with him, the fact that he sat up here all of the years that I've been alive, which he used to, you know, laugh about. But he, at the end of the day, loved the city, respected the residents. He was strong in his faith. And I know he's very excited to be up there with his lovely wife, who I'm being, I've heard that he visited her, visited her mostly every day since her passing in nineteen eighty-seven. So we're sure gonna miss you here, John. May he rest in peace. Thanks, Mayor.
Alderman Sapiti?
Yeah, I just want to add a couple of things to that about Alderman Verchay. When I first got elected three years ago, he was one of the first ones to come over to me, congratulate me. And he had a couple of words of wisdom. And of course, I listened closely being that he was, you know, the elder statesman on this council. And I always, always looked to him for, just for his wisdom of being in city government for so long. And me being the new guy up here, I was, I was really thankful for his willingness to spend that time with me. But that was just the person he was. He was always giving of his time, always had a smile on his face. He frequented a donut shop nearby that my daughter was working at at the time. And she got to know him through his time at the donut shop. And he would always kind of kid her about me being up here with him. But he was always just a kind man. And my daughter especially appreciated that. But he'll definitely be missed, so thank you. God bless John Verchay.
Alderman Overland?
Well, I of course want to extend my deepest sympathies to the Verchay family. I understand that it doesn't matter if you're six or you're sixty-six. When you lose a parent, it's very difficult. It's a life-altering thing and leaves a hole in your heart for the rest of your life. So I want to extend my sympathy to the children in the family. It's very difficult. I also want to tell Alderman Gazal, I applaud her for her courage in her comments. As a woman, I share her sentiments. As a strong woman, an outspoken woman, that we sometimes get labeled other things that men don't. But I want to applaud her for her courage in speaking her piece. Thank you.
Alderman Gazal?
Karan, welcome again. Thank you for the chat earlier. I know you're gonna do good things. But like I said, you have big shoes to fill. But I know you're gonna do your best. but like I said, you have big shoes to fill, and, but I know you're going to do your best. I know that, like we're talking with you. And to Lisa, thank you for your service to our city, and I don't know if she's going to listen to this, but I know we'll be hearing from her pretty soon. And John Verche, my condolences to his family. I'll keep my comment to myself about him.
Alderman Jefferson?
Yes, I'd like to extend my prayers and condolences to the Verche family. Like Mark, John was one of the first people to welcome me here, you know, and I, sitting next to him for the three years that he, that I've been here, he would always tell me, you don't have your gym shoes on tonight, so I know you're not running away from the council yet. And we, you know, he was, he was just such a pleasant guy, very friendly, very funny, and very level-headed, you know? He could tell you about the path to this city, and he didn't even need a notepad to remember anything. Scott as well. I mean, these, these two guys have been very helpful to me since I've been here. I also like to say, welcome again, Koran. Look forward to working with you. We're a city in transition, but we trying to transition in the right way, you know? And, and to my council members here, I know all of you knew John a lot longer than myself and maybe Mark, but, and you all know a lot more than I do, but I could tell you this guy left an impression on everybody. I, I heard it tonight. He left an impression on everyone. Thank you.
Alderman Dyke?
Where do I start? I spent many years here with John, not only in Ward one, but also in another ward before we redistricted. Known John as a friend. I first want to give my condolences to his family for their loss. John, like Nate had said, had a sense of humor. If you didn't give him the raspberries first, be sure he was going to give it to you. He loved to give it as long as, as well as take it. I mean, he always was kidding around every one council meeting at the old city hall. One time we got done saying the pledge, and I didn't realize John moved my chair on me, and I ended up falling back into the kitchen with the old city hall. So, yeah, he was always, you know, ready for a joke or a prank. John was a big car guy. Loved cars. Me and him talked cars a lot. He told me about back in the day in the police department when they got a new Ford interceptor. Because back in the day, when you got a police interceptor, you got something that the general public didn't have. They would put a different cam, heads, intake carb, and he was telling me how the guys would take out that Ford interceptor, you know, back then in the city, there was a lot of open roads, so they could really open it up. He said that thing would really move. So he always liked and talked about racing and going to different races when he was younger. And unfortunately, got older, he couldn't sit outside in the sun or that and enjoy races as much. So he watched it on TV, and I remember talking with him a lot. I remember times where we had the Crest Hill Memorial Day Parade, and John rode with me in my car a few times. And one year, he said to me, he says, hey, Scott, you know, he says, I'm thinking of bringing my car. You going to bring your car? I said, John, I'm not bringing my car. So if you're bringing your car, I'm riding with you. So this will probably be my only chance to ride in that car. And he drove that car to the parade that year, and I remember going for a ride in it and talking with him and joking and saying how he needs to get his cars out more. But what room do I have to say? I don't take my old car out as much as I should either. So we're probably both the same in that respect. John, he was, you know, like I said, he I never heard him say a bad word about anybody. He just, you know, liked to be everyone's friend and kid with everybody, and anyone that knew him knew that. So I just, it's going to be an empty spot here that, you know, he had here for many years, and I hope, you know, we have a resolution for him and something special we can do to commemorate all the years he gave to the city, not only up here and on the council, but also with the police department. I used to always joke with John too. I told him that many a times, I'm sure yous have heard me tell him this, that he was here when they brought the dirt into Crest Hill, so. And I'm sure he would appreciate that joke. He always would laugh about it. So may you rest in peace, John.
Absolutely.
Public comment? Anyone like to address city council? Please step to the podium, state your name for the record. Address is optional. There, let the record reflect that no one has approached the podium. To our city attorney, Mike, there is a need for executive, executive session for two C one, two C six, and two C eleven, correct?
That's correct.
Motion would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
We have motion by Alder Person Overland, seconded by Alderman Jefferson to go into executive session. Roll call, please, Karen.
Darrell Jefferson?
Yes.
Claudia Gazal?
Yes.
Tina Overland?
Yes.
Mark Sapiti?
Yes.
Nate Albert?
Yes.
Joe Kubo?
Yes.
Scott Dyke?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we'll be going into executive session at eight thirty-one PM.